Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson of the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, we will hear Bill Number 23-0435, zoning modifications. In attendance today, we have members of the committee. John Bullock of the Ninth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mark Conway, I did see him of the...
He stepped out a moment.
He just stepped out a moment, of the Fourth District. And Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District. Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District has an excused absent. We have also absent Antonio Glover of the Thirteenth District and Ryan Dorsey of the Third District. And we also have joining us Councilman Costello of the Eleventh District. And Mark Conway of the Fourth District has returned. Representatives of the Office of the President... Oh, and we also have Councilman Slyfer of the Fifth District, sponsor of the bill. And representatives from the Office of the President, we have Tiffany Macklin, Deputy Director of Legislation. And Representative for the Office of the Mayor, we have Tyler Chanelha of Government And we also have Erin DeGrafford-Reed, General Counsel for the Office of the President. And let's begin. Bill Number 23-0435, zoning code modifications for the purpose of amending provisions of the Baltimore City zoning code relating to variances to conform to relevant state law, making modifications through the process of granting variances, clarifying provisions of the zoning code relating to non-conforming structures, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the zoning and land use laws of the city of Baltimore. We're going to go ahead and start with comments from Councilman Slyfer, which is sponsor of the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. So first off, I want to start off by just pointing one thing out for clarity's sake, because we received a couple of emails today about the topic. And so, back in June 12th of 2023, I introduced a bill 23-0402 on this topic. That bill had a bunch of different ideas in order to correct the issue that we're here to solve, which I'll get into in a second. After getting feedback at a hearing that we hosted in the Rules and Oversight Committee on that topic, we decided that it would be a lot easier to simply draft and craft a new piece of legislation, which is what we are hearing today. And so, the emails that I've received today on some items related to different things, like the timeline of posting signs and those things, those are on the previous bill, not the one that we're hearing today. And so, we will be happy to differentiate based on the topic. But this one, we're going to go through them and ask Eric Tiso in a minute to elaborate on how the implementation's going to look like. But the reason that we're here today is the BMZA had operated in a certain manner for the past 40-plus years, abruptly changed the way that variances were being accepted. And what it immediately did was it had a ripple effect across the city. I saw it directly in my district where people who... homeowners who wanted to make simple modifications to their property, minor modifications, that many other people on their same block had gotten approved days prior, weeks prior, and years prior, suddenly no longer were receiving those basic same variances. What drove me to act is I had a gentleman in my district with ALS who lives on a block that all the houses are identical to one another. He struggled to get approval for building a one-room addition onto the side of his house so he can wheel directly into this room, because his house was multiple stories, and he wouldn't be able to get up there with his wheelchair. And so, wanted to just simply build a one-room addition on the side of his house. Ironically enough, many of his neighbors have much larger additions, but when it came time for him to apply for this out of need, it was denied. And the reason that it was denied was that his home was not unique in shape to any of the other homes on his block. And so, when bringing that issue to the relevant agencies, we were told that the best way to correct this issue is to simply create... clarify the law and to make the necessary corrections so that you can get these variances. So what we're here today is for owner... like owner-occupied, single-family residences where folks want to go and make minor changes to their property. This isn't about commercial properties. That process is not changing. That's not what we're here to discuss. That will still need to go through the BMZA. This is simply for residents in the city who want to put an addition, want to expand, build an extra room, close in a deck, close in a porch, expand their kitchen, instead of them needing to spend tens of thousands of dollars on legal fees, which many people don't have the ability to do that. I mean, as it is, building the additions are already taxing enough, especially as costs have risen, for them to have an onerous problem on the city side, when ultimately what ends up happening is they have a lawyer draft documents for them. They come before the BMZA. It would go on the consent agenda and then get approved, and they basically just wasted many thousands of dollars in professional fees that they should have just been able to simply fill out an application, as long as they have the community support, community association support, neighbor support, which is the situation I ran into in my district even recently. I had a homeowner whose elderly mother, they wanted to move in because she could no longer live alone. They wanted to enclose one of the porches, and instead of being able to simply do that, they were denied that, and they ended up having to go through a very costly rezoning procedure. Meanwhile, they had followed all the necessary steps, which we're still asking people to do, which is go to your community association, talk to your neighbors about it. And if there is nobody in opposition, and you have the community association support, like he had, and you have all of your neighbors in support, like that constituent had, there's really no reason that it should just be completely denied. And so, that's really what we're talking about here, is that... is those things. Now, on the flip side, if anybody does raise any opposition to any of these minor variances, for whatever reason, whether it's a good one or not, it does end up going and reverting back to the old process, which is then there will be a hearing, just like it used to be with the consent agenda. If somebody is there in opposition, an item is removed from the consent agenda and has an appropriate hearing. So that's just the basic overview. I look forward to hearing everyone's input on the topic, and I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you, Councilman Slyfer. And thank you for that clarification, especially between the 21-10-day notice, because I noticed that a number of opposition letters have come in, and that was like one of the main changes that they were in opposition of, and that was the 21-10-day. And if that was referring to the previous bill that you had mentioned, I hope that that brings some clarity on that particular issue. But we're going to go ahead and continue to move forward with agency reports, and we're going to go ahead and start with the City Solicitor's Office. And we also know that you have amendments as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michelle Toth, on behalf of the City Solicitor. And we stand by our bill report approving for form and legal sufficiency with the recommended amendments.
Okay. Thank you. And that's the recommended amendments from the Planning Commission, and more mainly from the Planning Commission, correct? Okay.
The Law Department had amended... recommended amendments. Planning also has recommended amendments, and today I received another.
So did you... could you go over your amendments?
I can, yes.
Thank you.
All right. So Amendment Number One is really just easy. It's on Page Two and Line Nine, and it would just strike the phrase "in writing," because currently, the proposed amendment to the zoning code changed the meaning of that provision. Originally, the meaning was that you had to authorize an agent to act on your behalf in writing. But the phrase was moved up into the body so that now what it requires is that a request for a variance be in writing. So if you just remove the phrase "in writing" and allow the, you know, the zoning administrator to require whatever form they desire for a request, it just makes it clear.
Thank you.
The Second Amendment is... Actually, I think the way this was drafted, I didn't... Let me just look in mine. The Second Amendment dealt with the addition, I think, of major variance. And I think the issue was, that I was trying to get at here, was that often someone coming to the BMZA or the zoning administrator wouldn't necessarily know whether they had a major or a minor variance. So I was trying to clarify...
By putting that subtitle?
Trying to clarify what a zoning verification is.
So you're titling it Subtitle IX, Zoning Verifications?
Yes.
Because that's what's highlighted?
Yes.
And the purpose is highlighted?
It's not a requirement to get this, but it's... it clarifies that someone who didn't know whether they had a minor or a major variance could seek one of these with the zoning administrator.
And yes, Eric?
Good afternoon, Eric Tiso for the Planning Commission. So I understand what Law Department's trying to get at on... and we're talking about Page One in Lines Nine and Eleven, moving the "in writing." If moving it to Line Nine changes the meaning to be too global and understanding what does "in writing" mean, because now they have electronic applications as well, instead of just striking it from Line Nine, I would return it to where it came from and keep it in Line Eleven, because on rare occasion, the BMZA does have instances where somebody will file an appeal for a property that they don't have permission to use. So having the property owner's approval is important. I do understand that on their application, there is a declaration on the BMZA's paperwork that has a place to certify that the owner is giving their blessing for you to do something on their behalf. And this is a totally normal procedure, so if you're going to be a tenant or if you're a prospective purchaser, you know, getting the use approval before you complete that business deal, totally normal process. But having some kind of requirement for a non-owner applicant somewhere is necessary, and I would defer to BMZA how they want to handle that, but keeping it in one place or the other would probably be helpful. And then also, the second half of that on Page One and Line Seventeen, the idea of having things start with BMZA... Katie Byrne, who was the prior Executive Director for BMZA, had the benefit of also working in housing, and she was on loan for a short period of time, so she kind of lived in both worlds. And I think what they were going for at the time was trying to figure out how to make the process have less friction. And so, for professional practitioners, if you're a land use attorney, if you're a veteran of the process and you know, okay, I'm applying for a conditional use, I can just go straight to the BMZA office, file, skip the step of having to file a permit, get it disapproved, get referred, then file. That makes sense. But for an average applicant who is not proficient in zoning code, doesn't know that, they're going to start the process by filing a permit, and they're going to get directed appropriately. So the way things have been practically operating, to the best of my knowledge, is everybody files a permit, and that's what they've been doing for decades. And it's my understanding that the current BMZA is not intending to change that, because now you have two potential streams available, and it can confuse things. So probably removing that would match current practice that has been happening for decades and would be acceptable.
Thank you. Any questions for Amendment One and Two from the Law Department at this time? Hearing none. And I do want to recognize a member of the committee has joined us, Glover of the Thirteenth Did the Law Department want to proceed?
Yes. Amendment Number Three is on Page Three, Line Seven, and it deals with the variance procedure, and we are recommending an amendment that the following sentence be inserted on Line Seven on Page Three. "The variance procedure in this title does not apply to changes in the uses, the maximum quantity of signs, the location requirements of signs, or the types of signs allowed within a zoning district." And this is because, in Title Seventeen of the zoning code, it is comprehensive and it regulates all signs. So if you all of a sudden allow a variance in the 500, Title Five, that applies to signs, you set up a conflict in your own code between Title Seventeen and the general variance procedure. So in order to allow variances for signs, Title Seventeen would have to be amended.
Okay. And this amended helps to clarify that.
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions for Amendment Number Three? Hearing None, Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four. This deals with... it's on Page Four, Lines One through Six. And I recommend, or the Law Department recommends, that they be stricken in their entirety and substitute the following provision. "A variance to bulk or yard regulations if the variance application involves a single-family dwelling within a residential district, as opposed to owner-occupied." Owner-occupied focuses on who is using the property, and zoning is directed at land use, the use of the land. So this was a way to accomplish the same thing without focusing on who was occupying the property.
Thank you. Understood. Any questions for Number Amendment Four? Moving on to your last one, Number Five.
Yes. On Page Six and Line Eleven, Section Eighteen dash four thirteen should actually be eighteen dash four eleven.
Okay. A technical amendment. Any questions for the Law Department? Let's move on to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, again, Eric Tiso for the Planning Commission. How do you prefer? Would you like me to just walk through the entire bill and kind of add in comments as I go, or what would make most sense for you?
Yes. You're going to walk through the bill, and I guess if you... can you work your amendments with...
Yeah, I think so.
And that would be helpful.
And sure. So I guess starting really, our commentary picks up on Page Two, because a lot of Page One is just copying existing text. We discussed the "in writing" piece, so we would differ from Law Department's first unrecommended amendment. Instead of just striking it, if you do that, then please take the brackets out on Line Eleven to keep it in its existing location so that a non-owner applicant still has to get the blessing of the owner in which... for an appeal, so that we know that the owner's at least aware. I also talked about on Page Two and Line Seventeen, the major variances. It was an idea at one point in time to have cases originate in the BMZA office to kind of shortcut things, but practically, that doesn't seem to be working out, so we recommend not doing that and leaving the process as it is, so that everything goes through the same consistent process. At the bottom of Page Two, this is amending five three oh one in the code. It is just clarifying some text. The unnecessary hardship language, I understand, really applies more to conditional... I'm sorry, variances in use, which our jurisdiction does not do. And so, that's not needed language, and that can come out, as written in the bill. Moving on to the top of Page Three, in Lines Two through Seven, in that paragraph, we shared concerns that Law Department outlined to you that there are some limitations on variances in Title Seventeen, which is our sign section, and we would like to retain those. So either removing the brackets and keeping the existing text, or probably adopting Law Department's more clear text in this area would get the job done of not removing the constraints on signage. Our concern of allowing variances for signs, we very deliberately wanted to have that there, because if we were to remove the constraint and allow variances on signs outside of what's in Title Seventeen, there would be no need for areas of special signage control, for example. So I just urge caution in that, and I think Law Department's amendment would keep the intent there and express it more clearly. On Page Three, in Lines Eight to Eleven, I think we already addressed that. Staff had some concerns, but Planning Commission disagreed with that and did not adopt our change there. Continuing in Lines Eighteen through Twenty-Nine, minor variances, the threshold was proposed to increase from ten to twenty-five percent, which is a significant jump. So we have real concerns with that, because that's not minor anymore. Understand the intent was to try and move things faster, but remember, that applies to everything. Usually, that twenty-five percent number is more of the threshold of pain that we have, even for cases that get heard in front of the board. So we think keeping the ten percent is the better way to go on those. Let's see. Moving on to Page Four, in Lines One through Six, yes, we agree with Law Department's concern there, and I think their amendment will solve that concern. And there's some clarifying amendments in Lines Seven and Eight there. Zoning administrator or BMZA may grant minor variances. Let's see. And then on Page Four, in... Okay, well, let me get there first. So Page Four, in the paragraph of Lines Ten through Eighteen, again, there's some clarifying language there. We remove the unnecessary hardship, because that applies to variances of use, which we do not do here. Some other clarifying text to modernize it. And then, this is really the big fix, the purpose of the bill, changing the standard for conditions peculiar to a property. And why we need to remove the uniqueness word is because, for example, in a lot of our row home neighbors, you have fifteen, twenty identical homes in a row. There's no way to prove uniqueness. It's an impossible standard. So this will fix that issue and allow variances to still be considered, as long as they're reasonable, and will allow us to continue doing business as we otherwise have been for the longest time.
Hold your thought. Councilman has a question.
Do you mind if we ask questions just while we're going?
No, however you prefer. This is for your help.
So, you know, one of the issues geared to address when it comes to the ten and twenty-five percent minimums, and I'm sure there might be a happy medium, but the issue that was brought to me was homes that are small... like smaller homes have smaller properties. That percentage is very small, which is why, you know, like on Line Twenty, it says, "A reduction or required yard setback by no more than ten percent," or switch to twenty-five percent, or two feet, whichever is less. I mean, it really shows you, like, we're talking about like a game of inches at that point. So, you know, right now, the zoning code and the way things are operating favor people with large properties and people with, you know, more financial resources. What this bill is aimed to do is allow most homeowners in the city who may need a variance to be able to get that without the financial need, right? Without the financial ability to go and do all these different things. And so, when you have a smaller property, you don't have... you don't have that ability to have that. That percentage makes a big difference. And so, I don't really think that change... that leaving it at ten percent is really equitable, because ten percent for a property that's very large is nothing. They're not going to go bigger than that. But, you know, when you take like the house, you know, one of the houses that I'm talking about, which is around the block from where I grew up, where they're semi-detached houses, they're all the exact same house, that percentage point, just that, you know, puts us at a disadvantage than somebody who lives in the community over that just has a very large property. So I would just say that's the one thing, I'm not sure if you guys discussed it at all, I just don't think it's equitable to put that on people and to disproportionately impact people who just don't have larger properties.
Yeah. No, you're correct. We look at things in the global sense. So twenty-five percent is twenty-five percent. When you look at big parcels, twenty-five percent of that is a lot. So it's really hard when we have like sixty-eight thousand parcels around the city to draft general rules that don't create issues somewhere. So I guess it's, how conservative do you want to be on this? So twenty-five percent, you know, works on the small lots, but might create a problem on bigger lots.
Right. But I mean, if we're being realistic for a second, when you look at like a lot, I'll just talk about my district, all right? So take where I grew up in Fallstaff. So in the Fallstaff neighborhood, there's semi-detached houses. The lot sizes are all about the same. If you go over to Mount Washington and you have very large lots, the odds of somebody building a structure of that size at construction cost the way they are today is a lot less likely that somebody's going to go ahead and build a thirty thousand square-foot mansion in Mount Washington than somebody in my neighborhood that wants to add on ten feet to their kitchen or add on a ten-by-ten-foot bedroom. So when you look at the lot sizes in the city, I think the vast majority of the lot sizes are pretty standard-sized houses, and you don't have that same thing that you might have in some of the suburbs.
Yeah, no, I agree. You're absolutely correct. It's just a matter of a policy decision of where you want to have that threshold. If it's less likely, maybe it'll be okay, but it's a big percentage, so... or at least it's a big jump in one shot.
Right. And look, if somebody wants to build a twenty-five thousand square-foot mansion in the city, I think we'd be pretty receptive to receiving two percent of that annually in their property taxes, so.
Thank you. Let's see, carrying on.
Any other questions on this Amendment Number Five? Moving on.
Okay. We had the... let's see. My phone went to sleep, so I have to get back to where I was.
Take your time.
Thank you. So yeah, we talked about the top of Page Four. That's really the, the fix that's there and that ripples throughout the rest of that page. We talked about the, the correction of typographical versus typographical. That was just a spelling mistake to, to be corrected there.
Amendment number seven.
And then, okay, so yeah, that covers the, the amendments for the bill itself. Were there any other questions on the bill itself before I go on to the other things? And I wanted to make it clear in our staff report by tacking them on to the end that they are completely separate. So this is amending the zoning code, so while we're in there. As an agency, we try to at least annually find where there's problems. I've got a seven-page running list of, of concerns that have been identified. And so I was trying to package some of the least controversial ones while we're, we're in there. So were there any questions on the bill before I jump to those?
And I like adding the subtitles to like approval standards. That's an added piece for that section. The way we look at that?
I'm sorry, for, for which?
For amendment seven.
Oh, so that, that amendment seven is all the things at the back end of the staff report that are other fixes to zoning code that are not in this bill itself. It's just other fixes that I'd like to do while we're in the zoning code. I just wanted to draw a distinction that there's differences from the bill itself. And then I'm just being opportunistic by adding those other fixes while we have the zoning code.
It helps to clarify.
Okay, so now, let's see. Looking at the planning commission's separate edits. So in title one dash two oh five, there was some relic text that survived from the old zoning code into this one. In the prior zoning code, there was a large use crisscross table at the back of the zoning code, which was a convenient crutch. It was not actually officially a part of the zoning code. So the, the text to be struck said that it's not official. It's just a, a convenient reference. Well, in this zoning code, because everybody was using the tables anyway, we put them into the code and they do have the force of law. So that relic text is being removed. The, the rest of it is just being renumbered for the use symbology because it moves things around when you take that relic text out. For our amendment three, this came from Parks and Recs. We're talking about one dash three oh seven, the definition of government facility. They wanted to just make it clear, because we have recreation indoor as part of government facilities definition. They wanted to make sure that recreation outdoor is clearly part of what a government facility is. They have a lot of them. So we a hundred percent agree with that and are adding that in for clarity. Then in five dash four oh six, under approval standards, there was a missing reference because it talks about how either the BMZA or city council can do something through a few sections. And the or city council was mistakenly left out, so we're adding that back in. Our amendment, that was seven, amendment eight is a table. It was pointed out to us by land use consultant that for residential care facility for age restricted in table 10 dash four oh one, there was 120 square foot per dwelling unit bulk control for C4, but the use is not allowed in that district. So that was a text that should not have been there. It should have been a blank square. So that's being replaced with the word none to conform that. Likewise, amendment number nine for us in table 12 dash four oh two. Animal clinics are allowed in, in the description of the TOD districts, all four of them. But in the table, for some reason, the P for permitted was omitted from the table for TOD three. So that's correcting that omitted text. For amendment number 10, modifying table 15 dash 601. This is permitted encroachments into required yards. For generations, the fence height in front or corner side yards has been at three and a half feet. And I had it raised to me by an engineering consultant that if you go to Home Depot or Lowe's, they sell it in four or six foot heights. So it's, that's the height that they sell most fences at. And it's not reasonable in today's world to make them cut six inches off of it to, to meet that requirement or to get a variance in every case. So if that's what they sell fencing at, we're proposing to go with that height instead. And I think that covers all of our additional amendments and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just, I'll start with, just for clarification. So I know that the law department had, I guess it's just clarification for amendment number one. So you, you were, the planning department was okay with amendment number one. Basically, if you added something.
Right, so the way the in writing moves in the bill, law is suggesting to strike it from where it moved to. And so I'm saying if you do that, just take the brackets out where it was coming from and just leave it like it is. To make it clear that a non-owner applicant has to have written approval from the property owner so that you can't just apply without the owner's blessing. I'm, I'm hoping that that solves.
So are you, do you agree with that law department? If the brackets were taken out, they, that would be a compromise.
If the brackets, then it would leave the wording as is in.
As in today's code.
Correct. I'm fine with that. I think that, I'm not sure it's 100% necessary since it says a person expressly authorized by the owner, which there would have to be an express, an express authorization. You know, it couldn't just be a silent one or, but I'm, otherwise I'm fine putting it back in.
Okay. Any questions from the committee on that one? I just had to get that clarification with, between the two from what planning had mentioned. And was there another one that was in discrepancy with something the law department had said?
No, no, I think, I think we were agreeing on all the other ones.
Gotcha, okay.
I, I think there was one of our amendments where we were addressing a similar paragraph that I, I think law department's solution may have been better wording than my efforts. Yeah, in reference to, this would be on page three and lines two through seven, that paragraph. I think law department's suggested fix for that by adding a sentences cleaner than what I proposed.
Number three? No, that's a.
It's number three for the law department.
Law department, what was it for yours?
It was, it was not adopted by planning commission, so it's probably irrelevant. Sorry, trying to keep everything straight in my head.
So you're basically agreeing with their number three.
Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha, okay. Cause I, when we vote on these, I just want to make sure.
It's a lot.
Everybody's on the same page. Any questions at, from the committee to the law department or planning? Okay, let's move on. Oh yes, we do have another amendment from Councilman Costello. Sorry about that, I was skipping out on yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment essentially changes, makes a change to the code for neighborhood commercial establishments such that instead of having outdoor seating on a rooftop deck, on a raised deck or in the rear yard of a property being a matter of right, the establishment would now have to go to the board or BMZA for a conditional use. And the reason that this, that I've proposed this change deals with provisions that were put into place by the council a couple of years ago in response to the pandemic. And the use case example, a hypothetical use case example that I would provide is if you are, if your residential property is on one street and a neighborhood commercial establishment backs up to the rear of your property, theoretically, there could be outdoor seating as a matter of right directly adjacent to your rear yard, impacting your quality of life and enjoyment of your property. So this would require, instead of it being a matter of right, that in order to get approval for this, you would need to go to the zoning board. Mr. Tezo, did I capture that accurately?
So there's two things that, that this does here. So in 14, three, 28 for neighborhood commercial establishments, it just removes the eligibility by striking them from the list. So it just removes them from that. So it wouldn't be by conditional use, it would just be removed. So this would actually bring it back closer to what we proposed in the bill two years ago. Now separately from that, in commercial districts, outdoor dining is generally permitted. But those are commercial districts, not residential districts. And then the second part of this makes sure that rooftop dining is a conditional use. So there's two different things that are, that are going on there. Likewise, the, the chart change at the bottom of the councilman's edits in, in table 10, three, oh, one, when that shuffling was happening, again, we were still in the throes of COVID and we didn't want restaurants to get killed by not having any place for, that people could be. Because in 14, three, 29, it made rooftop dining, that subset alone, require a conditional use in C1, C1 VC and C2 districts. If you just looked at the table, it says P permitted all the way across. You wouldn't necessarily know that. So this fixes the table by adding its P or conditional by board with this, a note that says, go look at 14, three, 29, so that if you're proposing rooftop, you would see that and it wouldn't be missed.
So I clearly fumbled my description of the amendment. So I'm going to defer to Mr. Tezo if anyone has any questions for me, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Tezo.
But your amendment pretty much is just helping. We, we were a little lenient during the pandemic, just so some businesses could be saved. And now this is really helping to put this back in order the way it was for the most part or close to it.
It's, it's kind of striking a middle balance. So before, two years ago, there was no outdoor dining for neighborhood commercial establishments. And again, those are residentially zoned buildings that had some kind of commercial history to them. And restaurants are on that list of seven things that they can have. So outdoor dining makes a lot of sense. But it was everywhere on the property, rooftop, decks, backyard, everywhere. So that was probably a little bit aggressive. So this amendment will pull it back closer to what planning staff had recommended at that time, being on the, the street side, bless you, or being on the interior of the property. But, which means in some cases, a building may be set back from the property boundary. So half of the open space is sidewalk and half of it's technically in their property boundary. So that would be fair play, but not in the backyard because again, most of those are butting up against somebody else's backyard. And noise can be an issue, especially in some of our more dense row home neighborhoods. And then again, being elevated, being either up on a second story deck or being on the roof of, of a structure, you know, that noise is going right into somebody's backyard. So we think that that will help control that. And then again, just clarifying our commercial districts where it's generally permitted, except for the rooftop dining, again, because of that elevated nature. A lot of our commercial zones, even C1 and C2 are right up against bordering residential. So by making it a conditional use, that allows for that discussion where it might be okay in one place, but not in another. And then again, the table corrections are just to make sure that nobody misses the fact that even though I'm in, let's say, a, a C2 zone, I'm allowed permitted if it's not on a rooftop. Everything else is permitted, but if it's rooftop, you gotta go get a conditional use from the board.
Thank you. Any, any further questions to the, for the planning department or commission from the committee? Moving on to housing and community development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Wright here, representing the Department of Housing and Community Development. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. And that includes the amendments that's been, that's been offered?
Yes.
Okay. BMZA.
Tyler Chanel, Mayor's Office of Government Relations, on behalf of BMZA, they stand by their favorable committee report.
That includes the amendments that have been offered?
I'm assuming so.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure it's a matter of record.
No, I, I do.
Okay. Department of Transportation.
Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. And Baltimore Development Corporation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. David Garza for Baltimore Development Corporation. We stand by our report favorable for council bill 23 dash zero, four, three, five.
Thank you. Do committee members have any comments or questions? Councilmember Conway.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I had a question about, there's a change in the bill. This is part of the original bill. I had a chance to talk briefly with the sponsor about it and just want to hear from the agencies and even the sponsor, if you'd like to add in the logic behind the change for the conditional use lapsing. And so in instances where the BMZ grants the conditional use today, that conditional use, if not used, lapses after one year. This bill would change that to two years. Can you give me a little bit of insight on the logic behind that change?
That was, I can defer to you, if the sponsor wants to go first or I can address it, however you prefer. So you're correct, the, the current provision is one year. So you get approved, you get the order from the board. It's got a date on it, it's not the day of the hearing, it's a date on the order. You have one year from that point. The board has been seeing a lot of requests for extensions, just the nature of financing or just the complexity of getting projects through. So this is a hundred percent a policy decision of where you want to draw the line of giving them an extension out to two years before they even have to ask. It would, there, in fact, there were three items. I was at BMZA before I'd run over for this hearing, they're still going. They had three items on, one of which was a subdivision that had some need to talk things out with the neighbors. They went to the board first to get their bulk variances approved. And then through the subdivision process, which is more public, that's where that discussion came from. So they're back asking for more time. But ironically, they got approved by the planning commission in January and they recorded the subdivision on the fifth of this month. So they just needed a little bit more time, but it's a hundred percent policy.
And for the extension process, how involved is that extension? When someone does request an extension of the.
I'd have to defer to the board. Unfortunately, they don't have anybody here because they're, they're hearing right now. But in the, the pre-part of the meeting, the executive director briefs them on the requests and, and why it's being brought and the board makes a decision. I believe it's just subject to their internal rules, but I haven't looked into it in too much detail.
Okay, and I'm guessing they just submit like a formal written?
Yeah, they'll either authorize it or they won't.
Okay. And, and instances where there are other issues with the conditional use that are controversial, that lend itself toward them not getting, not putting the conditional use into play, does that have any factor on the one year or conceivably a two-year expiration date?
It would not change anything in the board's order because nothing changes. So whatever happened, whatever decision they arrived at, they're just arguing over how long that that is good for before they would need to reapply, but it doesn't change anything in the terms of the board's order, just the duration. I'm not sure if that answers the question.
I'll ask the question again. Does, does any other? Does, does any other factor outside of just the time change the evaluation of the time? So you have one year after the conditional use was approved, but let's say the conditional use was challenged, went through court cases and so on and so forth, does that have any bearing on the one year?
So I think this is where I'd look to the side, to the law department for some help. If there is a legal challenge, I believe that tolls the time on the board's order. Am I correct?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I would have to look into it.
All right, we would need to get back to other factors bearing on the problem from, just by observation, maybe whether the applicants kind of created their own problem in the delay of, there was one particular project where there were comments in the permit system, and the applicant just appeared to not address it, but then they kept coming in, this was at their last hearing, asking, well, we just need more time, and the board's like, look, you gotta do this, like, we can't go forever. So those kinds of things bear into it, but if it's being appealed, that we would need to get you a more detailed answer.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so we have to do public testimony next. So he's getting the list. And while he's getting that in-person list, be prepared, if you're online and wish to testify, please use the raise hand button, and we will unmute you, but we're going to do the in-person testimony first. But even before that, we have a question from Councilman Bullock.
Yes, good afternoon, and thank you, Madam Chair. This is actually just leading into the public testimony, but just curious from both the sponsors' perspective and also our agency reps, just the role that community input plays in this process. Because again, obviously, some of these things, these things come before the BMZA, and oftentimes a lot of people testify, and we know our communities are very engaged with that. So even as we lead into the public testimony, can you talk a little bit in terms of what impact that has to?
Sure. So first off, as far as the bill is concerned, community input is the reason why we're having this bill. And so we've seen the inequities that have taken place there, and so that's what we're aiming to address. And so this bill still keeps in place the community's input. And so anytime there's any opposition, whether it's warranted, or it's just somebody who doesn't want to see their neighbor, you know, have their kitchen a few feet bigger than theirs, it automatically will take this process to a full hearing. And so that part of the process will not be changing. And so anybody could, can oppose any variance for any reason, and that will immediately revert back to as if this piece of legislation didn't happen. So, I mean, the community input is as important now as it ever was. In fact, I think it's even more important, because what this would do, would encourage people who want to get a variance. I always tell people, if they call my office, the first thing I do, and I know a lot of us do the same thing, is the first thing we tell them to do is to go to the community. Go talk to your neighbors and go to the community, you won't even want to talk about it until you've done that. And so this gives an even bigger power to the community and to the neighbors, because if somebody wants to get a variance for whatever their project is, and they realize that there's an inexpensive path if everybody's happy, versus an expensive path if anybody is unhappy, they're a lot more likely to change the plan accordingly to accommodate their neighbors, as opposed to what we've seen many times, was folks who, you know, hire certain lawyers to come and represent them, you know, they'll steamroll the community and, you know, fight on the legal side instead of working with them. And those are the ones that we all struggle with when we try to get the community's input enacted. And so I think this actually gives more power to the community.
Councilman Glover, question?
Yeah, just kind of piggybacking on what my colleague Bullock was kind of talking about. I remember having a situation in the Carrick community where we had a developer come in wanting to change some properties and make an apartment complex. And the variances went there, and I think there's a reason why they weren't there, because it was just too, this place was already too small anyway. So we're trying to basically push it into our community, and the community really didn't have enough time to kind of fight back. Even when it came down to getting representation from, legal representation, to fight against the law department or from BMZA, there was a struggle, there was a fight. So my question is, how do we give the community enough time to reach out for legal representation? Because in our community, developers are going to already have those attorneys and things in the neighborhood, the community is going to find, try to find some kind of way to get their legal representation, whether it be free, or community associations putting the monies to get those attorneys to fight on behalf of them. How are we going to expand that timeframe from those 21 days to allow the community to have their input to seek legal representation?
Thank you, Councilman, for that. So just to clarify, this legislation does not deal at all, does not change anything regarding commercial properties. This is for residential properties, for like, single-family homes. And so all of those processes would stay the same. The one piggyback benefit, I would say, is that right now, the BMZA, we all know, has far more items on their agenda than they can physically handle during their meetings, which is why a lot of things have been pushed out so far, and they don't have as much time to focus on each individual item, because they have such a jam-packed agenda. And so by removing items that are simple, small variances that normally would have gone on a consent agenda, gives more time for the board to hear and deal with the larger stuff. But this bill does not change any of that process regarding apartment complex, commercial properties, anything other than residential properties.
Okay, understood. But what about the, because, you know, I represent a totally different community. What about those communities where, just say, just the next door neighbor wants to maybe build the deck or something on the front of her home, and now she's blocking the view of the neighbor, the legacy resident that's been there forever, just say that view of downtown, or whatever. What do we, what do we do as opposed to, some of the communities where you live is like a whole bunch of open space? And it's just different from the community where I represent.
Sure. So I actually had a similar case in my district a few years back, before all these changes at the BMZA. There was a neighbor who wanted to build a deck, and one of their, and almost every single person in that community, it was a new development community, almost every single person had a deck already. There was two homes next to it that didn't have a deck, and so one person was going to build a deck, and the neighbor didn't want them to build a deck, because then they would be the last house in the neighborhood without a deck. And in that case, it went to the BMZA, and the BMZA ended up granting that variance for that individual to build a deck like everybody else had. In this case, it actually gives more authority, in my opinion, to the homeowner, because now the process, the process is streamlined if your neighbors and the community and everybody agrees, and it's a minor variance like that. So if everybody's on the same page and you work out the details, hey, you know, I'm fine with you building a deck, but I don't want you to block, you know, to block this view, or I don't want you to block that. And then it gives the neighbors the ability to compromise more. Whereas right now, in that situation, and that's in most of those situations, you go to build a deck in an area where you can build a deck, they're going to approve it. So I think this bill is actually going to give those neighbors more of an opportunity to work it out beforehand.
Thank you.
And just a reminder too, for everyone that's watching and the committee, that at the beginning, the sponsor did make clarification, especially with the reduction of the notice period, 21 days to 10 days. This bill, evidently, people were confusing this with another, another bill, and that has, it's no changes with that. Councilman Stokes.
Yeah, I just have a question. Maybe Eric Tissot could do an answer, or maybe, Councilman, the restrictions, are they going to still be the same, or do they change if this bill passes?
Planning Department.
So which restrictions are you interested in?
The same process you had to go through, yeah. But it's not, I guess this bill, can you explain it a little more, whatever the restrictions were before, if this bill passes, will the restrictions still be the same, or will there be some changes to the process?
To your general speaking, processes would stay the same. Eligibility for what could be a minor variance is what we're debating. That's the 10 versus 25% threshold. So more items would be eligible for a minor variance process than a major variance process. That's really the shift. But once you're in one of those, everything else is by and large staying the same, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the percentage? Or any other questions? Okay, we're now going to go with public testimony. And I think we have five people that are here in person, and we'll start at the top of the list, Jan Everland, or Evelyn, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Jan Evelyn. I am a Brooklyn resident, Brooklyn businessperson, and the CEO of Action Baybrook, which is a 501(c)(3) in Brooklyn, Curtis Bay. And I am here, first thing though, because some of my testimony, of course, concerns the time requirement, the bill has 10, as in how many days, in square brackets. It has 21, not in square brackets. So I'm sorry, am I not correctly understanding the bill? What is the notice period, 10 days or 21 days?
So which bill number are you looking at?
I'm looking at 23-0435.
Yeah, Eric, so I mean, that's not, that's not in, that's not in Bill Number 23-0435. And again, that confusion, I think people, a lot of the testimony we received on this item also, is in reference to a previous hearing we had on a, on a similar bill, Bill 23-0402, similar topic regarding the consent agenda. So unless, unless we're missing, we're missing a line, but from our review, we don't see that that was included in this, in this version. Madam Chair? And if it carried over, we're more than happy to, that's not, that's not an item that we're concerned, we're happy to make those amendments.
Councilman Conway.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I think she may be talking about the variances and not the days. So it goes from 10% to 25% of the applicable minimum lot with requirements. It doesn't have any reference to the days in that regard.
I will certainly review that and clarify. I like to think that I didn't confuse days with percentages, but anything can happen. Thank you. So as a resident, I am familiar with what people outside our communities attempt to impose upon our communities, and they usually do it in a lot of different ways. One, of course, is the notice period, which I understand remains at 21 and is not reduced to 10. The second way is to call it a, oh, unimportant, small, insignificant, even though it is very significant. We had one situation where the people in a residential neighborhood, of course, they're not, they're not, they're owners, but they're not residents, they wanted to add on far more than 10%, onto the back, they wanted to build a deck on the top, they wanted to build it out into over the alley, and they thought that was perfectly reasonable and minor. We obviously do not. And the disallowance of that then caused them to abandon the property. In the case of the small lots that we're talking about, say, a 14-foot by 40-foot lot, it could be reduced to 14 feet, from 14 feet to 10 feet. And that would obviously result in what I call grotesque distortions of lots. And that's what we have had over in Brooklyn, when people don't bother to seek variances, even they just do it. So we would like the 10% to remain 10%, not be increased to 25%. We want to clarify that the time period is 21 days and not 10 days, and we would like to retain the uniqueness requirement.
Thank you for your testimony.
One other thing, we would also like to require community support, because right now, there's, I mean, in our community, people say that they consulted the community, but they actually don't. There seems to be no requirement that the community be given a voice, either pro or con for that matter. But of course, a developer, whoever, is really sure to point out if they're able to give a favorable report. So we would like to have some requirement that the community was, in fact, consulted.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
There's still, I just want to make an important note, there still seems to be discrepancies and questions that are really in reference to the other bill and not this particular bill.
Okay. Great, Madam Chair. Councilmember Al Barry, speaking on behalf of the Baltimore Development Work Group, on a couple of aspects of this bill, which we support. I've been working on zoning for over 50 years, and been recognized as an expert in planning and zoning in various jurisdictions around the state, and have been, as many of the council members know, been working primarily in Baltimore City on both the old zoning code and transform Baltimore. It might surprise you that myself, in particular, that would be affected by perhaps more people not needing me. We don't get the outrageous fees that some people do, but we do get asked to help homeowners, in particular, when they have these small additions. And I'll agree with Councilman Schleifer, that many people in his district and other districts that want to improve their home, improve, invest in the city, are finding the, perhaps, the zoning code too onerous. We're glad to help them out, but if they can do it themselves, that's great, and they, the city would be better off for it. We looked at a number of, not the whole, aspect of the changes that the bill goes into. I think I want to commend Councilman Schleifer, the administration, the planning department, that spends a lot of time trying to correct aspects of the zoning code when something comes up or a pattern comes up that they feel needs corrected, as opposed to waiting three or four or five years and letting it, letting it happen. So, but we focus on several things. One, the, let's see, I have it here, the variance procedures and the standards, there's been, from going before the board- there's been, from going before the board, there's been a lot of confusion about how to interpret state land use standards for variances. It's in the state land use code, it's also in the city code. This was an attempt, as we understood it, to make it consistent between the two. And the use of unique became a problem. The use of peculiar, which is, in some cases, synonymous, was, was meant as a guidance to the board, not to eliminate the standard, but to give them a broader look at what those might be. We also looked at the times of approval, Councilman Conway's statement. One year is not enough to even get permits. Many people start with the zoning process to get their approval, then they might have to apply to HUD, they might have to apply to the state for financing, banks, even private financing, will take longer than a year. Two years is the bare minimum. And in keeping with the extensions after that, we think that's a great idea and overdue. I'm not the legal expert, but the law department will, I'm sure, tell you that it's their understanding, our understanding, that if a property is approved and appealed, the one year starts from the date of the final determination by a court. Could be Circuit Court, it could be a court of special, you know, whatever. But so you don't lose that time just because of an appeal by a, by a opponent. The last thing we felt was important is that there was an anomaly in the code that dealt with noncompliant properties, and whether or not you could approve something for a noncompliant property. It's, it may seem like a minor clarification, but it, it's being cleaned up, and I think Planning Department's amendments recognize that. The major versus minor is the last thing I'll talk about. And Councilman Schleifer is absolutely correct. When you talk about a 10 percent for some of these small properties, and the extent of which just a minor change doesn't, we'll go over that, we think 25 percent is reasonable. We support the 25 percent. We would hope that the council would leave that in. There is public notice, has been stated, there's a posting on the property. If people object within 10 days, these are the immediate neighbors who are likely to object within 10 days. So expanding that, if the council needs to do that, that's up, that's up to you. But we feel that the variance, minor variance standard ought to be at 25 percent. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions to Mr. Berry?
So I think one of the outstanding issues that we're, that's still talking about is this, is the 10 percent versus the 25 percent. Being that you've done this for 50 years, you said? I hear that correctly? Can you just walk us through, like, what you've seen, what that looks like on, I mean, we know what it looks like on, on, on large properties, but what is, what does this extra 15 percent look like, you know, on, on the average property in the city?
Okay, well, I'm going to also add one aspect of that, which I think is overlooked, is that there, there is a provision for the 10 percent in the new transform as a minor variance. It's my understanding that rarely, if it's ever been used, I think, I'll just speculate, that the 10 percent, in many cases, is so small that somebody won't do it, or the zoning administrator won't do it. They just automatically refer it to the zoning board. By making it 25 percent, I think it makes it a more substantial aspect, that somebody is worth doing as a minor variance, and taking that chance that they don't have to hire myself or someone else in trying it. I think you pointed out some metrics of 10 percent for a 10-yard setback requirement doesn't amount to much in the scheme of things. It's de minimis in terms of the impact. I think the majority of the homes that we see that apply for these variances, whether it's for a height variance, or it's for a side yard variance, a rear yard setback variance, they generally need more than 10 percent regardless. But the difference in that is so minimal, it might be a foot or two difference over what they should be getting, and what's reasonable, I think, so. 10 percent was too small. The Planning Department has taken a position, I think, without any, any guidance in the code, that they would approve variances, forget major versus minor, they tend to approve variances on density or setbacks if it's up to 25 percent. That was the old standard in the old zoning code, 25 percent. You couldn't go beyond that. And I think the Planning Department and the council correctly saw that that was an unrealistic burden for the whole city. Maybe 25 percent for large property might make sense as a limitation, but not 25 percent for smaller properties on McCullough Street or some of these streets, where from a density standpoint, the 25 percent might get you an additional unit, whereas 10 percent doesn't. And these are big row houses that need to get to three units to make them economically feasible to renovate. That's my, you know, observation.
Any other questions to Mr. Berry? Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Good, thank you.
Joan Floyd?
Now? Okay, thanks. I'm going to clear up this business of 21 days versus 10 days. I really wish I didn't have to, but nobody here has yet addressed the issue. So generally, this bill is about taking things, adding things to what are minor variances. That's basically what the bill does. We're adding to the universe of minor variances. So that's where the 10 days comes in, and a lot of other things as well. So I just want to point out that years ago, we fought and got the 21 days, because it was, it used to be 10 days for the BMZA. And, you know, it was a very short period of time. And after a very long, very long advocacy by very many people and groups, we were able to get the city council to, to, to make it 21 days. But, so now that's what we're all used to. We're used to the 21 days. There's also a database that is maintained, so we can, we can look at that. But the minor variance process is where the 10 days comes in. That's where the 10 days is. This minor variance process that we've just heard doesn't get used. That's where the 10-day posting comes in. So if you make something, if you add something to the minor variances, you're reducing it from a 21-day posting period to a 10-day posting period. That's, it's not going to be in this bill, because this bill isn't going to reflect everything that, that, all the effects of this bill. But if you go to the code, the part of the code that talks about the procedure for minor variances, that's where you get the 10 days. And it's just not enough for these, these variances that are really going to be significant. In, in, you know, some people's eyes, they're very significant. Now, staying with the process, or that procedure, the minor variance that, that no one out there is familiar with, but exists in the code, it shifts, in my view, it shifts the burden from the applicant to the neighbors. Right now, burden, the burden in the variance case is on the applicant to bring evidence and prove that certain qualifications and requirements are met. But this bill turns the tables, because it requires neighbors to come forward in writing within the 10-day posting period, very short time. And that has to happen in order to make the BMZA have a hearing. It's a big change, because right now, the BMZA will have a hearing. Now, of course, if there's no hearing, there's no testimony by neighbors. So if neighbors are unable, for whatever reason, to use that procedure to force the BMZA hearing, then the approval process takes place, it takes place in private. The zoning administrator makes a decision, and the neighbors don't have the opportunity to testify. And it's really easy to see how you can miss getting something done in 10 days. It's very easy. It also, there's also a question, frankly, and it's on page two of my testimony at the top. It is certainly not clear whether the aggrieved neighbor could, could find out about the zoning administrator decision. There's no, nothing in here about requiring it to be, to be announced. And then, could the aggrieved neighbor, who got left behind in the first round, could that person appeal to the BMZA within the next 10-day period for, for appealing zoning administrator to the BMZA? Finding out about the decision is going to be very difficult. We don't know where it's going to be. And if a neighbor did file an appeal within 10 days of a variance approval by the zoning administrator for a minor variance, question would be, and we don't know the answer, maybe they'll answer today, the BMZA, the law department, would they accept that appeal, or would they reject it? Because in the minor variance procedure, it really only provides for the applicant to, to appeal the decision. So you have this issue that is created now, all this, all this procedure. So that's the, the one thing I wanted to talk about. Yes, it's a 10-day notice period. Yes, it is. People, this is not a reference to some other bill. This is about this bill. It's about taking things from major and making, putting them into minor. Now, I do have a couple of other notes. I want to point out that the, the part of the bill that refers to, that was referring to owner-occupied properties, also is, is an unlimited variance. There's no percentage there, it's unlimited, unlimited in height, density, setbacks, and lot coverage, which now goes to the zoning board. So for purposes of seeking unlimited variances, the bill does, as written, and I think it's been pointed out, it makes owner-occupied properties a special class, an advantaged class, thereby placing non-owner-occupied properties in a, in a separate class. One gets to use the minor process, one has to use the, the major process. So I think that is, that's definitely, appears to violate the uniformity requirement anyway, which would make it illegal. There's another area in which that same problem exists here. When we talk about the, say, the 25 percent, or whatever the percent is, for purposes of expanding a structure's bulk and density, okay, what this bill does now is takes the non-conforming structure, and that structure is allowed to go through the minor variance process. But think about this, in the same zoning district, perhaps next door on the same block, a structure that doesn't violate the, the bulk regulations, that one has to go to the BMZA as a major variance. That, in addition to, you know, being bad policy, making no sense, it's probably also a violation of the uniformity requirement, which again, would, would make it illegal under the state law. Couple more things. Obviously, if you're, if you're taking out the uniqueness requirement, you are not, you are actually taking out something that is, that is recognized all over Maryland. So, you know, I'm just going to have a basic question about that, because I think you're not talking about variances anymore, you're talking about some other thing that you're creating. But it, it's a, it's a variance if it, if it has to have the uniqueness requirement. So I would, I would say that it doesn't comply with, or doesn't conform to relevant case law at all. And I would also say that it doesn't promote orderly development. It seems like this is going to get very disorderly, and a little bit chaotic. Last thing I want to say is I agree with the, both the, I agree with the Planning Department and, well, especially the Planning, keeping the in-writing part in there, please, because frankly, it's, it's good to have it. And, and it's really important, I mean, let's think about this, it's really important that the city doesn't process applications from people who don't actually have the property owner's legitimate approval. It's, 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 authorization in writing is the best protection for the city, and a very easy way to get it is to have the written requirement in there. And I made a note in my testimony, it's a very simple requirement, it protects the city, and think about the fact that the liquor board doesn't just require writing, approval in writing, but actually an affidavit from, from the owner. So this is, this is a very simple requirement that should be kept in, the in-writing phrase. And I think those are the things that I wanted to say to you. But please, when people are talking to you about 10 days, this is what this is. This is about 10 days. Any questions? I'm happy to take them.
Thank you for your testimony. Robert Hunt?
To the Presiding Officer and the City Council. My name is Robert Hunt. I'm the president of Alliance Rosemont Community Organizations. As you pointed out, there was a misunderstanding of the bills. And that was one reason why I came down. Time limit was one of the things that sounded that we, communities were being shortchanged. Input of communities sounded like it was going to be taken out. So those were one of the reasons why I came down, because we need to be informed and have our say-so, because we just need to be a part of the development plan of the Baltimore City, that's, because we live here.
Thank you.
So I'm going to just leave it at that. So I don't want to take up too much of your time.
Thank you for taking your time and your advocacy. Crystal Parker?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, member of the council. My name is Crystal Parker, and I am the president of the North Avenue and Hilton Street Business and Community Task Force. I just have some general concerns regarding safeguards of the bill. We, when you look around the room, everybody that has spoken, we, we are from diverse neighborhoods. So what may be a concern and standard for, say, Upper Northwest Park Heights, is we have a different issue in the Lower West section in Southwest Baltimore. What we have, what we, what we often come up against are people who purchase properties, live there maybe for a while, or maybe not even live there. And then they want to do something inside of the property. So, for example, it may be an addition, but it may end up being an eight-room boarding house. And based on the bill, as I'm understanding it, we don't have any safeguards really in place to know the difference between a legitimate homeowner who wants to do a minor renovation that is not going to impede anything in, in the community or the other residents, or someone who comes in under false pretenses. So I'm wondering what type of safeguards could be put in the bill that we would be able to, some kind of way, short of going into the person's home, of course, but some kind of way, be able to legitimize what these requests would be? That would be the one, that would be the one, one concern. Also, I think that there should be some level of requirement, particularly for those homeowners who are legitimate, to come to the community association so that, or someone in the neighborhood, so that we can provide letters of support. We definitely are not here intending for anybody to go through any unnecessary due processes if they don't need to do that. But our major concerns are people, are imposters, people that come into our communities under the pretense of being a homeowner, maybe staying there for six months, even a year, and then creating something different. And I'm not really understanding if there is safeguards in, in the bill as, as written to prevent those things. And that's a major, major concern for us.
Yeah, so, so, thank you for that. And, you know, I've seen, I've seen exactly what you're referencing in my district as well. And what I find is that, you know, you mentioned that people coming in and doing work without a permit. Oftentimes, when, when that's happening, especially when it's on side streets, it's like off the city's radar, right? Whereas like, if you're on a main thoroughfare where a lot of people are going, there's a chance that, you know, an inspector or somebody might see. And so anytime anybody goes to like the BMZA or gets any degree of a permit, it, they end up on the city's radar. And so, you know, by streamlining this process, those folks who want to do things correctly will have, have a more simple track, whereas... Whereas people who are going and doing work without a permit and are trying to, you know, not show, you know, show the city what they're doing, that's not going to, you know, there's no simple fix to that other than getting people along the right track and showing them that it's easy to do it the correct way and following the correct process and working with the city. So as we streamline the permitting process, which there's a complete overhaul of that system, and streamline some of these processes, well, then, then folks don't have that excuse where they say it's too cumbersome or too expensive to go ahead and do it the right way. We want to make sure that things are being done safely and correctly. And so I feel like if we're streamlining those processes, then it gets the people who are doing these renovations or property owners, it gets them doing things the correct way and on the right track.
Okay. So then I would say that what my request would be is if there's provisions in the bill that kind of outline what are we talking about when we're talking about minor modifications or minor renovations? What that is and entails? What that would be? You know, like a list of what those minor things might be? And then I guess, on a case-by-case basis, if it's something that's a little outside of that, then that can be subject to that matter. The other thing is, is too, is whether it's this bill or another bill, or whichever bill is confused at this point, I do believe that it would be justifiable to continue to have 21 days for any of those because a lot of the areas, again, in underserved areas, we might only have two other residents on that block. And so not having that 21 days' time to file a complaint, talk to the neighbor, or even support the neighbor, I think that would just be, that would take away the abilities for us as community organizations and residents to really be a group, a collective group, to speak on behalf of our community. So whatever the timeline is, I would ask and request that it would be still 21 days, regardless of what the bill is. So if you can put in any type of modifications to, so we understand what you mean by minor modifications.
Yeah, so thank you for that. And just so you know, I speak for myself as a bill sponsor. Items that are on a separate track and separate rules and regulations that are outside of this bill, whether it comes to, you know, some things require a certain period of time versus others, I'm completely open to that. If somebody were to submit a piece of legislation that says, hey, they want to change certain things. I mean, the zoning code is something that just got a tremendous overhaul. And so there's been a lot of discussion. And so a lot of the items that we've been hearing about are things that have already been hashed out by the previous council when that zoning was done. But when it comes to notifications, look, I'm open to having, giving people more time and more ability to participate. I think this legislation does do that. And if people want to talk about other, you know, other tracks and other things that are outside of this bill to help increase that, you know, that's something that I would support. I don't see any problem with a separate thing where, you know, a process that's already in place, separate from this legislation, that only requires 10 days. If people feel like they need more time and bring that to the council, that's not something that I would oppose. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just to add, I was part of that 40-year overhaul of the, when we were doing Transform Baltimore. That took four or five years, really, to, six, seven years. And when we finish the testimony, before we do our voting, I'm going to get Eric to really kind of clarify a little bit more about this 21-10-day piece because we do have things from the BMZA that's being pushed to the zoning administrator, which is kind of a new position. So we'll let him just clarify that more. And again, it's things that are, other things that are coming out as we're, as, you know, separate little bills are being put in. And very important things that we all need to continue to look at and add more legislation as we go along. And I think there's one more person. Sonia Ede. Did I say your name right?
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
My name is Sonia Ede, and I am the president of the Poppleton, now, Community Association. I'm here today. I got a notice of this bill. And I just felt the need that I had to come down here to share. So the bill sounds as though it is written for the benefit of developers and investors when it comes down to our and the city black neighborhoods. People who are looking to profit by making property changes that will increase their income and profit margins. These are not the homeowners. They are property owners. And this should go through the proper procedures. And the residents of that neighborhood should be able to know in detail and purpose, the purpose of the changes. These investors do not live in the house and does not plan to reside there. We are still in need of family-sized dwellings in our city. We need to use these dwellings to stop pushing single-family parents into large apartment buildings where their health and quality of life is at risk, or pushing them out in the counties where they are isolated from family and everyday essentials. I know that people are not having as large of families as in the past, but even as senior citizens still entertain and may need a shared room for guests or caregivers. The city appears to be moving in the direction of building for young professionals who are not planning for families at this time and thus already past the childbearing age. Correct me if I'm wrong, but to my knowledge, if a homeowner wants to do minor renovations such as kitchens, bathrooms, basements, and decks, they are only required to have a permit pool for the work order design and design plans if needed, if necessary. And the city inspector will oversee that work. It's properly done. And the same for a use and occupancy certificate. Let's be honest. This is another way for the city to provide investors density and allowing substantial variances pushed through as minor with too short a notice for neighborhoods to oppose and avoid the zoning process. These things we have already experienced in our neighborhoods where notifications are hung and we do not travel certain areas. And by the time you see the notifications, it's too late. So for these and other reasons, I oppose today this Henry Bill 23-0435. And that the changes, the 21 days, should be in place. We should have opportunities to know what's happening in our neighborhoods. Thank you. If any questions?
No questions. But I just want to reiterate the confusion between the two bills. And this particular bill is, a lot of that you mentioned, we're all taking in. And, but it, this particular bill is for a particular reason. A number of things have come out, but it doesn't really, it's almost like the complete opposite of, you know, it's like supporting what you're saying. Councilman?
Yeah, and just to also reiterate, this is not for commercial properties. And I know you mentioned investors. The initial way that I was working on this was specifically talking about owner-occupied. And in the beginning, the law department shared that that would be problematic. So my whole intention here is to help homeowners improve their property, which helps the city, helps our communities by people investing in their own properties and making that easy. The law department, one of their amendments is to make it that it's a property owner that doesn't have to be owner, that the owner doesn't have to be, have to be living in there. So just want to just clarify that and set the record straight.
And that was, you know, and that particular bill was not in this committee. It was in another committee as well. So there's definitely been some confusion out there. But your testimony is well noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anyone else in person? Just want to make sure we don't leave out anyone that has been waiting. And we do have one person online. If you, if your hand raised. And we're going to, oh, there you go. Cindy, Cynthia, you're on.
Hi. Hi, my name is Cynthia Gross. And I guess I'm, and I currently serve as the president of a community association in East Baltimore. I think what I want to say, and maybe I'll say it a different way, is I'm surrounding the 21-10 day. But I'm going to say it this way. I oppose expanding the minor variances section. For me, the minor variance section is about 10 days. And if this bill is about expanding the minor variances so that more things go in under minor variances, I'm opposed to that. I would rather them to stay in major variances where they get the 21 day.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Are you finished?
No, I want to say that. I also, in support of retaining the uniqueness requirement, I have had to go to BMZA, submit testimony as a community person. And anything, and for me, this bill does not speak to equity. It speaks to the ability of the BMZA to continue to make unfounded decisions in private. And anything that continues to allow the BMZA to function in a cloak of darkness is not equity to me. And I do not support it. So I do not support this bill. And I do not support increasing the minor variances section.
Thank you for your testimony. So as I mentioned before, we have the BMZA and we have a zoning administrator. We have this 21-day thing hanging out here. And we're just, just for clarification to the committee, could you just really kind of hone in onto how all that's going to affect this particular bill? And then what we have to do, possibly do later to help correct some other things as we move along? Knowing, and we've, the council has been knowing once we started, you know, the working on this 40-year rezoning process, that there is going to be things that we're going to add and change. And it's a, it was a big, complicated, huge document. And we're continually working on those things. So on that note, Eric from planning.
Sure. So again, to summarize, I think I see where the confusion is coming from. And I think Joan Floyd's testimony was spot on. So, and in fact, it's in my staff report as well. So there's two different pieces here. Or if there is a minor variance, it would be potentially a two-step process. The first posting would be a 10-day posting. And that would give people an opportunity to reach out to the zoning administrator with whatever concerns they may have. If it gets referred to the BMZA thereafter, that would start the 21-day posting period, which is not changing. So this doesn't touch any, either of those processes. So if, as you've heard from concerned residents, that 10-day period is too short, you could always amend that in 5603D1 to extend that 10-day period for minor variances, if you so choose. That's one solution, just thinking off the top of my head. Or there could be other solutions, but that's just the first one I can think of. But that would be a two-step process. On the other hand, if you're applying with a major variance, nothing changes. It's still 21-day posting period for BMZA, like always.
And that extension could be done at this meeting? Or would it have to?
It's in the zoning code, just like everything else, yeah.
Is that something? Is that something that could be written up?
I'm sorry. Is that something that could be written up and given to us by second reader? Of the next council meeting?
We can work with Legislative Assemblyman's Office, yeah. It should be a fairly simple amendment if that's what the council wants, to make both 21 days.
And it looks like that's kind of in agreement with the committee. So we'll, we'll have to see that amendment happen for this bill and moving forward. As I said, we're, as things, it just shows how important testimony is from the public. Any questions? And final comments before we do our votes on the amendments and the bill?
So just one thing that, as far as the amendments, I mean, I think we went through all of that. The only thing that I would ask as the bill sponsor is when we move forward with all the amendments that we table, we table the one amendment dealing with the 10 versus 25%. And if there's any further discussion on that, to then bring that up in the amendments on second reader.
I have a comment. Councilman Stokes, can you explain what the amendment going to?
Yeah, so on that one amendment, the, I just feel that the 10, so based on the size of the property, if it's 10, right now it's 10%. Like if you're expanding beyond, beyond that amount of the property, bringing that up to 25%. Right now, it, these variances disproportionately affect homes that are on smaller properties. And so when you, when you're living in a semi-detached house or a row house, like many people in the city are, majority of the city are standard-sized lots. I mean, we're a city. There's very few properties that really have that much land. I mean, we know the specific neighborhoods that are. So the idea behind this whole bill is to help homeowners who need to expand their property by a little bit here or there, for whatever the reason may be. Oftentimes, I'm finding it's to allow a grandparent or another family member to be able to live with them. And so leaving it at 10% when you have a small property, like Mr. Berry testified to, you could be talking about like two or three feet. Whereas if they need an extra few feet, they would have that ability to do that addition. Without it being expanded to 25%, it's just not economically feasible to do most of these additions because once you're breaking through the wall and you're expanding, if you're only going to be able to expand a few feet, you're just not going to do it. And what I've found in my district is people end up putting their house on the market and selling and moving to the county, which is what I'm trying to avoid. And so that 25% I think is important to stay.
Council vice president, can I have Eric from planning explain the amendment? Can you explain that 15 days?
You're not, the percentage piece?
Yeah, the 15%. What you just explained about the amendment?
The 10 days versus 21, I'm sorry, I was having a sidebar.
The chairman is asking about the 10% versus 25%. So like Mr. Berry testified, the zoning board, you know, often approves up to 25%. That's kind of the threshold. So the idea here is to encourage people to stay in their home and invest in their property. So the chairman would like some clarity on what that 10 versus 25% looks like on some of these properties.
Sure, okay. And I was partly with Mr. Berry on that. So yes, under the old zoning code, there was a limitation on maximum variances. And between all of us, the board routinely went past that with impunity, which is one of the reasons why in today's zoning code, we removed maximum limits because it wasn't practical. And there was always cases where there were And there was always cases where there would be a good reason that was artificially limited by that maximum cap, even though everybody thought it was, was reasonable. So we took that maximum out. Our department routinely supports good projects that have significant percentages of variance where we think that it's warranted, but we think it should have a discussion. So our pause in extending the 10 to 25 percent, again, we're approaching this from a very conservative viewpoint. 100% acknowledge your concern on smaller properties. Yeah, you're right. It affects them more. But 25 percent starts to get larger on bigger property end of the, the spectrum. And so we just think that having that public hearing is the better venue than potentially through a minor variance, especially if there's concern on the window of, of opportunity for people to be able to comment. But again, where that line is drawn, that is a policy decision for your body to make.
Right, and I, look, I'm, I'm flexible on, on that. I just think that it kind of defeats the purpose if we're trying to help people that, you know, want to go ahead and do this without having to spend all their money on, on paying profi, you know, professional services. They'd rather spend the money on investing their house. I find that to, to be the problem. I agree on larger-scale properties, they don't mind paying attorneys and, and all those fees. And so if, if anybody in the committee is interested in proposing a different percentage or just leaving it to 25, that's, that's my, my request is to leave it at the 25, but if anybody has anything else to add to that, I, I'm certainly open to discussion.
And if it's worth mentioning here, just to brag a little, we like to think that the modern zoning code solved a lot of this problem because the BMZA routinely had approaching or exceeding 1,000 cases per year, and now they're in the 300s. So we like to think that that solved a lot of the problems just by allowing it by right already. So I think we're trending in, in a positive direction.
Thank you. Okay, let's get to the voting of these amendments, and we're going to start with the law department. So just for clarity, so we're dropping Amendment One from the law department because we're accepting?
Modifying.
We're modifying the one from Planning. So?
Correct.
For, okay. So is there a motion to recommend the amendments from the law department as we also drop Amendment One from the law department? Is that how we're doing that? Because?
So it's a modification to their, so it's?
Modification, so I'll say modification.
Yeah, it would be accepting their strike in the upper line, but simultaneously not needing to remove the brackets in its original location, functionally leaving that exactly as it appears today.
Okay.
So it's, it's kind of a blend of the two.
Is there a motion to recommend the amendments from the law department and for Amendment One modifying? Do I have a motion? So moved by Conway. Is there a second? Second by Middleton. Chair Middleton, is a yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Dorsey absent. Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos absent. Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. So that's taken care of for the law department. Is there a motion for amendments for Planning, and that was one, four, six, seven, and additional staff amendments? Is there a motion to recommend those amendments from the Planning favorable?
So moved.
So moved by Conway?
Second.
Second by Bullock. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Dorsey absent. Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos absent. Stokes?
Council vice president, is this the amendment that we're gonna, it's not the same amendment we're gonna introduce on the second reader, is it?
No.
Okay, yes.
Okay. And then there were motions for Planning Two, Three, and Five modifications?
Madam Chair, that was only prepared in the event that you disagreed with the Planning Commission's analysis and wanted to adopt them. I don't think they're necessary at this point.
And we didn't, so we can skip that one. And so we'll move to Councilman Costello's amendment. Is there a motion to recommend the amendment favorable?
So moved.
So moved by Conway, second. Second by Bullock. Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Dorsey absent. Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos absent. Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. So we also, right, there's going to be a floor amendment at second reader at the next council meeting for the extension of the 21-day piece. And moved by Conway, second. By Middleton? Middleton, yes. Oh, this was the, the added 21-day extension piece?
The gift of 21 days.
Yes.
For minor, for minor.
Yes.
For minor, yes, okay. Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Dorsey absent. Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos absent. Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. Okay. Did that cover the amendments? Were we missing any other piece with this bill? Okay. So now is there a motion to recommend the bill favorable? Conway, moved. Second by Middleton? Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Oh, I just made my vote. This is for the entire bill, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, here we go. So I, I will say, I appreciate our colleague, Councilman Slife, for bringing the bill. I understand some of the issues he's raised. At the same time, I do understand the unreadiness there is amongst some members of the committee, but also in terms of the community, hearing from folks. I am more encouraged by the potential amendment that will get on second reader, so I'd be a little bit more ready then. So at this point, I'm just going to abstain.
We did that already. We're now on the bill.
The teachers voted on that amendment instead of doing it on second reader.
I know. But we get a second reader.
So Bullock abstains? Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Dorsey absent. Glover?
No.
Glover is a no. Ramos absent. Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. So we have only three yes votes, and this bill does not move. Well, we don't have enough votes to move it. Can this, can this bill stay in committee, or it's? No. It doesn't pass.
It's staying in committee.
We, you don't have the votes?
I would have to look into that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe it's a negative report, and then the council can take action on, on the floor and send it back to committee. But as always, I'm not a lawyer, so I defer to our friends from the law department and our wonderful, fine general counsel.
Our council from this, our city council council?
Good afternoon, pardon me. Yes, I concur with, with Chair Costello just articulated that it can be returned to the committee and stay in committee.
Okay. So at this point, it now stays in committee, and we're going to do a recess.
And we'll continue to work on that amendment and get to the citizens.
And you'll continue to work on it, yes. Thank you.